Pledge of allegiance before we do the roll call?
Yeah.
No roll call.
No roll call. The flag is visible?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I need to approve the agenda and another roll call vote please.
There any changes? I don't have a change.
Any changes to the agenda?
No.
I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Carlos?
Yes.
Do we have any recognition?
Yes, I just want to, I think we've got one principal here. Ms. Bertola, do you want to wave to us?
Michelle.
There she is.
So it's National Principal Month.
Happy Principal Month.
So we.
They get a whole month?
They get a whole month.
We just get a day.
We just, we send them coffee every day all month. National Principal Month is meant to celebrate principals, assistant, associate principals, deans, just administrative staff at the school level. So we appreciate Michelle and Rob for all that they do. They set the tone for the school. They are the leaders of the school and they are the people that make sure the work happens where it happens. We kind of get to talk about big picture, but our principals are the people that make things happen every day. So we really appreciate them and just want to give a shout out to them.
Thank you guys.
I'm assuming that addresses principals appreciation?
Correct.
Public comment. Visitors are allowed three minutes to address the Board of Education. I have no one signed in. That doesn't mean you have to be signed in. Do we have any public comment from anybody? Going, going, gone. Thank you. Board of discussion, we don't need that. Committee reports. Committee of the Whole.
Yeah, the only thing I would add here for Committee of the Whole is I got a list of deliverables there. For me, I did reach out to the Illinois Association of School Boards and connected our regional rep with Paul. And they're working through, there's a couple of different options that IASB does for training. So she's walking through a couple of different options from, from that with him. It's traditional. In other school districts I've been in, IASB works directly with the board president to set that up and organize that. So I assume that in the coming weeks, we'll do some polling on possible dates that board members would be able to do that for. Still working on the other items.
You should know this. Is there a Lake County chapter to that?
Yeah, there is. It's, it's like a regional chapter. It includes Lake County, McHenry County, and Boone County, I think. Correct.
Anything else on that from anybody? Covered Diversity Committee.
We don't have anything to add unless board members that are on that committee do.
There's a report I had a chance to look at and any comments, questions on it from anybody? Okay, this is moving too slowly. Superintendent's report, Danny.
I do have, I think, two items that just happened recently over the last couple of days that I'm looking for some input on. One is I met with the township and just did a walkthrough of our property here on the Allman campus, specifically between the Allman campus and the township. There is some, I would say wooded overgrowth areas between our property and the township. And they offered as a sign of good faith partnership moving forward to clean that up. It hasn't been cleaned up in some time. We just haven't had the staff to allocate towards cleaning that up. It's pretty overgrown. So they offered at no cost to clean that up and start maintaining that for us. I think it does impact them because when people are on their property, it's not as nice as some of their property is and it would probably help them feel better about their property. I think the new leadership over there does want to extend a hand of fellowship and I think they are also hoping that when families are on, attending events on our side of their property, they see the nice property on the other side and that they're hoping that might increase just some utilization.
It's kind of towards the back of the building?
The back of the. Where is the back of the, is it just right here?
Towards seat all or towards that seat all edge is where the bad property is?
Actually to the, to the north of the building, there's a big beautiful wooded, I mean, almost a garden.
The north path? It's north, just right this area?
Yeah, just right to the north.
It's, it's between where our, our band practice is and the track, kind of where our band practices over to the track and that fenced area.
You go into the Warren Township parking lot there and keep going as far as you can and it's right there in front of you and it leads all the way to our land and it's just beautifully landscaped. There's a nice path through there and it connects to us.
And there's a road that goes all the way to the back?
Yeah.
There's fields back there. So it's what lines our property to those back fields.
Right.
Got it. That's what I thought, but I just, yeah.
Full agreement or compensation for this?
They don't want any compensation. He is asking for some type of IGA that just gives him permission to work on the property. Probably take multiple years. There's some things that probably would happen right initially, pretty easily, but there are some dead trees and some of those areas that they'd have to kind of look at a longer term approach. There's also a protected owl, I think, that has a nest back there that they'd have to be, like, think through that. But they are looking for just a multi-year intergovernmental agreement, no payment. And if that idea concept is okay, I can go work on that and then bring something back to, to consider.
Is the, so it's usually each side benefits in some way. So we benefit from the landscaping and they benefit from what, usage of our property?
Right now, he's not asking for that in the IGA. He's, he's just saying, I think it'll look nicer for us.
Yeah, sounds like, yeah, I just, usually there's a reason for it, but I, yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. Especially since they have all the equipment and it's located right there and working together with other taxing bodies makes all the sense in the world. I'll just throw out my preference. I, I'm not a huge fan of long IGA's, long-term IGA's. I think it prevents flexibility if we ever needed to. I'm not sure why we would need to right now, but there might be a reason at some point. So I, I'm a bigger fan of shorter renewable time periods as a way to solve that. So I'm just throwing that out there. I'm just one person, but.
No, that's good. That's the type of feedback I'm looking for.
Works for me.
No, Yomer, I think he's just trying to reach out, be a good neighbor. He's, he's new and he's trying to.
Yeah, and I always worry, like, is the person will change over time. The agreement's with the entity, not the person. So even if we're friendly with who it is right now, that doesn't mean that that person will always be friendly. So it's, you know, it just, it protects.
Yes, I think the short-term rollover is, is a good thing. So you get, you can get out within a couple of years or three years or something, yeah.
That's good feedback.
Yeah, I like it.
Any other feedback?
Works.
You have several things in your, in your report. You want to talk about any of them? Would anybody have any questions on any of them?
The, the, I don't have anything other that's on, or anything to support anything else that's on there. I did this weekend get a quote for the turf. So this is just informational. We'll come formally for discussion on this. It looks like it's going to be about $650,000 to do the turf this summer. It's through a co-op, state co-op, so there, we don't have to go through a bidding process. I'll send that to the board here this week and then we'll put that on a future agenda.
ELA is going to work on the bid for the estimate for the locker room?
Yes, so that's good to talk through. So what I included there on the agenda is, let's see, the engagement agreement. And that gives them, from us, that gives them the approval to go ahead and start working up on some drawings and some cost estimates. I, I do have a question on that. Sometimes it seemed like Dr. Engel was bringing these engagement agreements to the board for signature. Sometimes, I'm, I'm not sure we always were. The engagement agreements generally are, for this type of project, is to do the research into it. The agreement is to not exceed $25,000. So when I talked to the board president with the agenda preparation, he said, well, put it on there. Just ask the board if they have a preference on knowing that it's happening, seeing those, or if they would like to approve them beforehand formally. I don't know if you have a preference specifically. I don't think I need you legally to approve it.
Do you have a, a, a level, you must have a level of.
Twenty-five, $25,000.
The only thing it does is if you have strong feelings from the seven of us, it saves money. Like if, if you knew that we had strong feelings heading towards something, like we could have prevented a $25,000 study. If, that's the only thing I can see.
I agree.
Otherwise, we shouldn't, I mean, you need to do what you need to do and not ask every single time because that stops you too.
As long as we know you're doing it, then that's enough to give us a chance to.
But could it be accomplished in a Friday update?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Yeah, and if it's a big project, generally I would. I think that's the right advice. I would probably need to come to and say, hey, we're looking at this. Is that okay? For some of the smaller projects, I probably wouldn't necessarily feel like it's important.
Everybody knows we need to work on the locker room.
Okay, deal.
Just for you.
Thank you. I was very excited to hear about that.
I'd also like to add that it's fantastic news that we're working on the locker room. That was one of the common sources of complaints among my peers at my time at O'Plane. I am Nathan. I'm a junior. Thank you very much. One of my chief concerns that come to mind is substance use in bathrooms, particularly locker bathrooms. During my time at Warren.
Substance use is what you said?
Yes. It's pretty common in locker room bathrooms particularly, but all bathrooms. Thus arises the issue of not only drug use detection, but drug use prevention. There are increasing levels of drug use among teens, which poses as a great risk to students' physical, social, psychological, and learning abilities. And as a physical, social, and psychological home away from home, it is imperative that our school has abuse education, early identification, and most importantly, prevention. Schools offer the most systemic way to reach young people and through the promotion of relevant and impactful information about drug use through perhaps a drug use program, we can provide a solution by prevention before the beliefs and expectations about substances are established. Now, students already have some beliefs about use through the DARE program in middle school. However, scientific research suggests that it produces little to no effect on drug use and was actually more counterproductive than anything. So how does our school approach this issue? I believe that we must place an emphasis on emotional regulation education, teaching students healthy coping skills to recognize their own negative feelings, identify and name what they are feeling, and express and manage those feelings. Learning practical communication skills about those feelings are imperative. This means that school, our school must work to de-stigmatize asking for help and promote seeking aid when kids are struggling.
That's great feedback, Nate.
Thank you, Nate. Anybody want to respond to that or?
Yeah, Nate, so I'm curious. I appreciate that. Like, are there specific avenues that would be meaningful for you in your experience where we could be doing that better?
Well, I know that other schools like Libertyville High School and Stevenson have smoke detectors in their bathrooms, which have helped. But I think, again, we have to focus more on the prevention tactics than just putting a band-aid on the issue.
How would you prevent it?
Again, through teaching emotional regulation skills like a drug education program. Like, like I said before, there are, there's the program DARE that we learn in middle school, but scientific research suggests that it's not necessarily effective and actually entices students to use drugs. So reaching out to students through our, you know, just general meetings in, in the, in the gym and then teachers advocating for use and being aware of the signs of drug use would be one way to combat that.
What about the speaker? Do you think having a speaker come in?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think that would be greatly beneficial. And again, focusing not on the, the facts about drug use, but really the, the reasons why we're using them, why kids go to that because we're not very knowledgeable, so.
Why they're medicating themselves.
Illoquent comment from a student here who's asking for some help and really address this best we possibly can, every way we can.
So I have a question. Do you consider smoking as part of your term drug use? I mean, it's nicotine, it's an addictive substance. Is that something that you're considering in that?
Definitely in the bathroom, nicotine and marijuana use.
Very, very common.
Absolutely.
Very, very common.
I know, Dr. Keeley and I had talked a couple of years ago about this, I think, or maybe last year, but I think we have a smoking cessation, the works of a program here, and maybe that's something that we just need to put out more. Put out more and advertise. I, I don't know the, the details of it. I don't know, Dr. Danny, if you know anything about it, but, um, I think it exists.
Yeah, there does, there is a smoking cessation program and some supports there for students. What I think is really interesting, in addition to Nate's comments, is he brought up emotional re- uh, regulation. And I just did, uh, Hani and Nate don't know this, but I just did give the board, uh, some proposed goals for myself for the year. And one of the things that we measure. When the two of you fill out, um, we asked you to fill out twice a year a survey that asks you some questions about things like emotional regulation. Emotional regulation was the item that I said they should ask me about later in the year to see how that's, uh, how that's doing. I think that gives the board. Automatically something that you can come back to as you look at my goals throughout the year. How are we doing with emotional regulation? And you can remember Nate's comments specifically.
Way to honor those comments is, um, when you first started talking, it was in the, um. Form of, uh, the locker room.
Mm-hmm.
And we're approving, uh, concept designs. So as, if someone from our administration could articulate to their architects. We'd be very curious to make sure line of sight. Um, you know, locker rooms, of course, are, they're just many times hard to supervise places. Doors are open, so. Um, anything they can do in the design work to make line of sight for supervision a little better, knowing that that kind of stuff happens. Um, it might be good for them to take that priority over, there are some architects that fancy design over function. In our case, we're in the function of, uh, educating kids and keeping kids safe. So even if it doesn't look as pretty, it might be better for the kids if there's a. Uh, I don't, just throwing that out there. If someone from our administration could pass that on, uh, if and when we approve this.
No, I like your comment because actually when I toured the locker rooms on Friday.
Yeah.
That was pointed out to me.
Oh, wasn't it?
There was no line of sight on.
A hundred percent supervision.
So, yeah.
It's a combination of education and enforcement. And we can do the one, but we also need to be able to enforce it as well.
We've gotten way off track, but that's fine. We appreciate that because it, it, would it be out of line to have somebody come in here? Uh, I know there are all kinds of programs of people who have been addicted and recovered and, and, and give quite moving presentations. Could we have something like that here?
Yes, I, I think we could do that. I think that probably what we need to look into is there's a tension between, um, it feels like a good idea to have some of these programs or speakers come in. And we're not sure data-wise, Nate mentioned that sometimes those programs will actually do more harm than good. And so sometimes it's a matter of going back to, like, emotional regulation, education with parents and families. About one in ten teenagers are having some type of interaction with an electronic cigarette or vape. Um, it's very common.
Higher than that, I would think, no? One in ten? What do you guys think?
I'm not sure. There is a lot though. Like, if you just walk through the school, sometimes if you just walk by the bathrooms, you can smell it from outside, so.
Still be under ten percent. Still be in there every, between every freaking period. I mean.
Yeah, that's just a national number. So nationally, it's about one in ten. So it is very common. Um, and we just need to be careful about what types of interventions we put in to make, because there was a lot of emphasis when I was going through school with DARE and then they came back and said, oops. Uh, so we just need to be careful about what types of interventions we put in place at the school.
I personally think it would be really beneficial to make it more of an emotional appeal rather than a logical appeal. Because, um, a lot of the students, because of middle school, do know the facts and they know that drug use is bad and this is what you shouldn't do and all that sort of things. But the real issue is that people don't really recognize how bad they are for you. And I think more of realizing how it could ruin your life. That's more important than, you know, just listing out all the facts because no one's going to remember the facts as easily as they will maybe like a real world scenario of how drugs can seriously ruin your life.
And I think it's important that while we must address the drugs, as a whole, we must address the reasons why people go to using them. That is the first point at which you can stop use.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Assuming other schools are doing something. We, we have an idea who, who does what now, no?
Yeah, so we do have, if a student is caught with some type of drug or illegal substance, we do, uh, offer them some education around that. We talk to the family. Uh, they can buy back suspensions.
But how about preventative?
I don't, I don't know if we do a lot of preventative, like, general preventative education, uh, with our students around drugs and alcohol outside of health and PE classes. So they are getting some type of curriculum through their health class. Um, outside of that, I don't think that it, that exists.
Are they required to take health class?
Yes.
Freshman year.
A lot of them take it in the summer before school starts. But I think it's part of the whole social, emotional thing. I think what Nate, Nate's bringing forward in a very eloquent way, by the way, but to say, yes, you had, drugs are bad. But telling people that isn't working. Helping them understand why they're doing it and maybe getting them on a different path before it happens is, I think, what you're, you're asking us to do more of.
Yes, absolutely.
So I think that's, so I think, but we don't do that on a, I mean, we're doing that more because we've, we've hired more staff for that type of interaction. But it's still, we're still woefully understaffed and that we still have one for every two hundred students or something. I don't know.
Yeah.
But so, but we can still weave that into something of the, somewhere, so.
And that's why I think that widespread education, whether that be through an assembly, a speaker, or another format, would be very helpful.
I one hundred percent agree.
Sometimes, uh, a speaker or, uh, getting a group together is part of a social, emotional curriculum. And we don't have a social, emotional curriculum. So we have a health-based curriculum that they get through the health class. We don't have a social, emotional curriculum which is taught. And then, for example, that was, we're advisory. Advisory has came up a lot last year in strategic planning, a set time during the week or during the month or during the day. Where we can teach students some of these more soft skills. Um, that's something that the board needs to, we need, as a district, we need to keep looking into the social, emotional curriculum. That all students get.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to be a one, one-person gadfly here and maybe respectfully disagree. I think we have a couple of students here who are pleading for some sort of guidance from people. Uh, that they'll listen to and I think we need to address it.
Okay, I'll look into it.
Okay, uh, let's see. We have administrative, let's see, monthly reports, September twenty-three administrative content. We have from Danny, discipline report and enrollment report and Freedom of Information Act requests. They're all in your, you want to talk about any of them, Danny?
Nope. I don't have anything to talk about until we get to E.
Okay, treasurer's report.
Yeah, unless you've got questions on any of them.
Do you have questions? Anybody? Look at them?
I did look at it. I have no questions.
Treasurer's report?
Same.
Same? Engagement, let's see, engagement.
We already talked about that.
We're going to talk about.
We already talked about DLA.
We already talked, thank you.
It's okay.
I'm working on it.
I'm working with you.
Okay, alternative learning?
There we go.
Yeah, we do, uh, have an annual part on alternative learning, uh, that Lauren and Kara are going to come up and do.
This is part, part action and part information, Danny? You want to talk about?
Yeah, this is just informational. We provide on an annual basis to try to help, uh, board members understand some of the things that happen behind the scene. Uh, tonight is specific about some of our non-traditional programming.
Hi, um, so as Danny just mentioned, this is a report that we go ahead and give you guys annually. So specifically, um, we partner to go ahead and support two different programs within our district through our ALAP grant. We have our Bridges Evening Program as well as our Transition Program. As you can see there, we've had them for a number of years. Go ahead and click. Both of these programs really strive to go ahead and create a broader educational opportunity for our students. We specifically want to make sure that we are offering those unique learning opportunities to help to support them. When we take a look at how we support them, each one of the students that participate in this program have what we call a student success plan. And that identifies their strengths as well as their needs and goals. Okay? So our Bridges Transition Program, you have heard me speak to you a number of times about our Transition Program. We are very, very proud of it. But specifically, our Transition Program has helped to design, um, educational opportunities for students through the, it's actually changed a little bit. So through the school year in which they turn twenty-two, that law changed a couple of years ago. Uh, we are always looking to increase student, um, independence, self-advocacy skills. They're applying those academic skills that they have learned through the first four years of high school. We offer those supports in a variety of different settings. As you guys know, we have our Transition Programs specifically over, or that building over at, uh, the O'Plane Campus. As well as multiple sites, uh, work sites within the community, um, as well as some volunteer sites. Excuse me. So our tran, go ahead.
Interrupting, Philmy.
Sure.
Through age twenty-one.
It's actually twenty-two.
Okay, well, you normally graduated eighteen. How does that work?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Well, special education students.
Student, student society piece.
You're required to educate till they're twenty-two.
You're teaching them life skills.
By law.
So the law changed a couple of years ago. It used to be that the students aged out the day before their twenty-second birthday. So now what we do is provide those educational opportunities for the school year in which they turn twenty-two. So for example, if a student turns twenty-two in October, they can finish out until May.
They come in here?
So they're at our Transition Program, um, over at O'Plane. Yep. So our program specifically focuses on three areas: independent living, work-based learning, and community access. So we're really proud of the fact we actually expanded our work sites again. So we have two more work sites. Um, we have partnerships with Culvers now as well as Logan's Dog and Grooming. So if you have any pups, our students are super excited. They really, really advocated for that one. So our staff's been great, so.
And what that means is.
Dog grooming.
I'm sorry?
Where is Logan's Dog and Grooming?
Ah, it's right next to Stevens.
Okay.
And then we also have a volunteer opportunity that is new, um, as well, keeping families covered. So that's based out of Waukegan. So that's in our partnership for us as well.
And Kara, for these, the students are going and they're working during the day as a normal employee and we have a, we have a staff member that goes and supervises a few of those students.
So our goal is to always have the students go as independently as possible. They start off with a job coach and then we have many students that are actually working there independently. We have several students who have actually stopped our Transition Program because they've achieved gainful employment at these locations. So we're really proud of that.
Related to something we're looking at, uh, is there any assistance to them in terms of getting to the job and transportation and all that?
So for the students that are here on our sites, we provide all the transportation. Yeah, we have a flexible learning program. We have some students that come five days a week. We have some students that come three days a week, kind of depending on their personal work schedules or whether or not they have any partnerships with CLC. So the whole goal of this program and the additional, uh, resources that are supplied through the ALAP is to just really provide that individualized opportunity for the students that are.
They get transportation from here to work to home?
So, no, it's from here to work to here.
Still get bus-.
Because these opportunities are during the school day. So our instructional program is broken, it's kind of in, into thirds. Uh, where we'll do some off-site opportunities. We'll do some instruction here and then we'll do application here. Any other questions about that?
All right, the second program is our Bridges Evening Program. Uh, it's basically designed for students who traditionally might struggle with the regular day school routines. Um, they might be at risk for not completing their diploma with their class or they have not met those requirements by the time they finish their four years. Uh, the criteria that we use to accept students into the program, they have to be at least sixteen years of age. They must have completed four semesters of high school and they have to be able to complete their diploma requirements by the time they're twenty-one. Our goals of our program obviously are to earn a Warren diploma, but we also want to give them some academic and social skills so that they can potentially return to the day school program. We do have some juniors that start out with us in the Bridges Program and transition back to the day school program. We also want to help them if they need or want to enroll in a post-secondary program or an adult education program. In addition, we want them to, um, become competitively employed.
How do they decide to transition back? Is that their decision or yours or who?
Uh, a combination. So we'll work together with the student. Uh, we kind of look at what were some of the impediments for success here at the day school program? Did they learn some skills that will help them to manage that? Um, and trans, you know. Here, the difference is you go class to class to class. You've got two thousand people in the hallway. There's lots of distractions. At Bridges, we do kind of a block scheduling where they have one class per night. And so that makes it a little bit more streamlined for them. They can focus on one thing at a time. So in order to transition back, we want to make sure that they can handle, um, that much, um, movement from class to class. We work with their parents, with their guidance counselor, and with the student.
Help them obtain competitive employment?
We do, uh, one of the, the things that we'll get to is some of our post-secondary planning and some things that we bring into our programming to help them do that.
You'll get to it.
Yes.
Some of them work during the day too.
Yes, and that's what actually, um, one of the things that we talked about here, our program design. Currently, we have about fifty-plus students in our Bridges Program. We have teacher-led courses as well as online courses. Um, our teacher-led courses are Monday through Thursday. We, uh, have the core areas of math, English, and social studies. We also, uh, provide PE. Um, Friday is dedicated to our online edgenuity program. And then, um, students can earn credit from work experience. So we have what's called our business internship program. Where, um, they get credit for work hours. They have a teacher that can check with them on that. Um, we also have two guidance counselors on staff, one social worker, one case manager, uh, fifteen teachers, and four supervisors.
Hate to keep doing this, but how, how do you get, how do you secure your, uh, places for them to work?
We do not do the same thing that Kara does with our Transition Program. So we don't help them get employment. But we do provide them with like resume building through that business internship class. And I think the next slide, Brandon, if you want. Um, we also bring, last year, we started really focusing on this, that post-secondary planning. Where we bring, um, our CLC navigator who works here at the day school, um, uh, Quinlan Meadowcroft. She comes to night school a couple of times, first semester and second semester, to talk about, um, degree programs, apprenticeships. We bring businesses in. Last year, I believe, I know for sure we had Baxter and I think the other one was ABVI. Where we brought in and they talked about internship programs and apprenticeships as well. We had the military come in to, to, uh, bring some informational. Uh, flyers and packets and things to the kids. We also have Quinlan Meadowcroft who comes in and does kind of a CLC application drive. We do that at the end of first semester for those students who may meet graduation requirements, um, in December and then again in second semester.
Could I, could I just clarify in my head? Because I, I have a hard time trying to figure out what, what a student. Like, looks like when you start considering him or her for the program. So this isn't, you know, your special ed coursework, right? This isn't transitions. I understand that. Is it, are these kids in general, like, having behavioral issues throughout the school day? And that's why it makes it difficult? Ta, can you help me understand, like, who, who's your target? What do, what do they look like?
Yeah. It's generally, we, we refer to it as the umbrella of our at-risk students. And you can be at risk for a number of different things. You know, you could have some behavioral problems, but we always look at why are you having behavioral problems, right? Is it because there's too many distractions? Is it because the social aspects of a larger campus kind of draw away from the academic piece? It could be because stu-, uh, students work during the day if their families need them to provide money and they just can't get to school. We've had some students who work nights and were working till wee hours of the morning and just couldn't get here. We have students who either are parents or are about to become parents who need just a little bit more flexible schedule come in. So there's many different kind of tiers as to what makes a Bridges student.
I so appreciate that. That helps me.
Yeah.
Yeah, get an idea of what we're talking about. Okay, thank you.
Laura, you've got here, there's approximately, like, right now, there's about fifty students in the program. So that's about, with about thirty-seven hundred students, that's between one and two percent of our students.
That, that few.
That's what?
I'm surprised the number's that small.
Yeah, sometimes we've had up to seventy-something. We had, and in a future slide, I'll show you, um, we had our largest, you guys are asking great questions. Um, we had our largest graduating class last year. We had, uh, over fifty students complete their graduation requirements either by May or through the summer.
Is that a function of?
Graduated.
Is that a?
Yes, they graduated.
Is that a function of need or staffing or both?
Uh, both.
Could you take more if you had to?
If, would we?
Could you take more if you had to?
Uh, we can take about seventy with the staffing that we have.
You'll let us, you'll let us know if you need more, right?
Yes.
All the staff is warranted. All the staff works here. All the staff is warranted, all the staff works here. These aren't outside people.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I just wonder what the capacity of the program is.
Yeah.
So it says this program is under the Alternative Learning Opportunities Grant. Who administers that grant?
Chris helps us write that one up.
But, I mean, where does the money come from?
It's the state of Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And so it's, uh, like, the definition of qualifying for this, these funds is that it's outside of the normals. I don't understand how these two programs connect. They seem like, like they would be separate.
The, the definition of the ALOP grant is Alternative Learning Opportunities, right? So it's anything that doesn't look exactly like a traditional school day. So like Bridges Evening Program, obviously very different. We, for a while, we ran a Bridges Day School program that was part of the ALOP grant, so that was like a similar type of opportunity for students over at Oak Lane who were in danger of not getting over to Almond. It was a program that we ran through ALOP, and then transition being that it's just a unique focus with career preparation and orientations. All those qualify under the ALOP program. So we applied several years ago to the state, say, we want to run these programs, and the state said that's a lot, that's approved, and then just every year we have to report on, you know, student success, how many kids are moving through the program, how well are they moving through the program, what are we planning to do different year, ever this year, what are our program goals? And that's an annual process that we get student feedback, that we report to the state anecdotal, as well as just achievement data. We do that every, or late spring, early summer, every year.
Okay, so do you take freshmen in transitions?
Into our special education transition. Transition since eighteen to twenty-two.
That's, that's what I was looking, it says through age twenty-two on this slide, so I was wondering how early.
So it's after you've completed the first four years of high school?
After.
After you've already earned the credits that you need for your high school diploma.
Okay.
So only students who are on the track of not graduating are considered for the Bridges Night Program?
And, and the other at-risk factors, so that's one of the factors.
So do you think...
But we might have some other factors, like we mentioned before, like if there's impediments to them being successful here, such as outside work, anxiety, not being able to, you know, I don't want to say, not being able to successfully complete a day, right?
So you guys work with the social workers and the counselors in order to find these students?
Yes, yes.
Did you guys know about this program?
I did not, no.
I had no idea.
Yeah.
I think that it would be beneficial for students to be aware of.
Yeah, I think it'd be actually really helpful, especially if we got the word out about these programs, because possibly students would want to go into these programs and simply don't feel comfortable enough maybe talking to a counselor or a social worker. So I think it'd be really beneficial if we somehow inform the school about these programs.
Yeah, so to clarify, it's not an opt-in program. A student can't come to us and say, hey, I would like to do this instead. Our first, our first line of, of offense here is to try to help them have a good experience in the traditional day-school, and then if the adults have decided, hey, this isn't working, or in combination with the family, or a conversation with a student, then we'll offer that. But it's not an open, it's not an open enrollment program.
Right, but then perhaps maybe they would talk to a counselor about their issues that they're having in the day program at school, like, and then if they can't work through those, then at least they are aware that another program is available to them instead of maybe giving up and just dropping out of school, because that is the last thing we want.
For example, I was just recently diagnosed with type one diabetes, and I've been struggling to fulfill everyday needs for school, but I have a very high GPA and I'm in very high level classes, so my counselor did not even consider me for this program, where I think it would have been beneficial.
And I think, you know, just going back to what Dr. Weisman said, you know, we'd be working with you guys, and that's one of the things that, you know, as student services members, we try to work with you on being successful in this day-school program first, because that ultimately will help build your skills and get you on to anything that you want to do post-secondary. But for those students who, after we put in supports and interventions to help you succeed here, if it comes to the point, and with your family and with you, that that's the decision that we make, then we can move towards the Bridges program. All right, just to wrap up, out of, since two thousand twelve, we've had over six hundred people go through our Bridges program. As I said before, about fifty-four, nine percent of that total is currently enrolled. We've had about fifty-seven percent of our students graduate, who have been a part of the program, and about thirty-three percent either transferred out or just didn't return to us the following year, or dropped out.
Thank you very much for explaining all of this.
Thank you.
And for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented, which includes personnel recommendations per Exhibit A, numbers thirty-seven through forty-three, as posted, and Exhibit B, numbers B two thirty-four and B two thirty-five, as posted. The payment of bills dated October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three in the amount of six thou- six million eight hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy cents. That's a mouthful, excuse me. Regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of October tenth, twenty-twenty-three, acknowledge and accept gift to the district as presented, the serious safety hazards and temporary serious safety hazards for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four school year as presented, and the agreements regarding the receipt of developer subdivision contributions and indemnification in the event of a private agreement. Anybody else wants to read that anytime would be fine with me?
You're doing just fine.
I need a roll call vote. I make the motion?
Second.
Any discussion or questions on anything on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Motion by Carlson, second by Anderson, Mrs. Pope.
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez.
Yes.
Mrs. Squires.
Yes.
Mr. Demonte.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. I just screwed myself up here, hold on, down on the agenda.
Resolutions for the IASB convention is next.
Go ahead, I've lost my agenda, go ahead.
That's what's next. Any thoughts or comments? I know we talked about it a little bit at the committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah, I did do some research on the bus driver regulations. It's primarily focused on new driver hours. Our transportation director doesn't think there's any way this is ever going to change. He thinks it's a loss.
It's a federal.
Yeah, it's a federal thing.
I did some research on it, too. It, it, I didn't get the impression that it's going to impact us in the suburbs. It was more downstate where they have a locator to find these federally-approved bus train, and there is a distance between them. But then they wanted to have it as a function through the regional office, and I can't, those regional offices are stretched thin. I can't imagine them adding somebody to train bus, like, it's, the whole thing is more almost a statement on its hard to, than it is in actual...
Solution.
Solution, and it's, I doubt it would go anywhere.
Nope. I don't think it hurts us.
Sympathize, but...
Yeah. Um, let's see, number five, I did some more research on, and generally, I, when I went through and read the...
Let me go back. So is the consensus that would be voted to not adopt, correct? Because they're recommending it be adopted.
I think everybody's okay if it's adopted, but I think it's just not, not going to do any good, but...
I slightly lean the other way. When there's federal reg... I would hate to see Illinois go against federal regulations, but, like, I sympathize, but at the same time, I, I feel like this came out somewhere. We don't really, as an entity, have much, we don't have a big stake in this one, so I'm perfectly fine voting however, but I do lean more toward not going against federal guidelines.
Sorry, I just wanted to back up there for a sec.
Yeah. I assume after I walk through these, then you'll, you'll keep talking some more.
All right.
For number five, I think the committee pointed out that there is already a funding formula through evidence-based funding that says, hey, here's how you should allocate personnel. If we start picking at that, then it'll disintegrate the evidence-based funding formula that made sense. Number four is the one that I still have a hard time agreeing with the committee on. I talked to the superintendent of the district that proposed it, they said they didn't get a lot of feedback, actionable feedback, but right now, there's nothing. This is just asking the legislation to consider something, and that, worst-case scenario, could at least spawn some conversation. But you all got to decide what you want to do for these five now.
It bothers me that in the resolutions committee analysis, it says they felt this was not the right system to use to fix the issue, but they don't say why. It's not obvious to me why.
Well, I would also argue it may not be their place to make that judgment as well. Like, I mean, you have a lot of school districts struggling, and I, yeah, I, there's a lack of clarity, there's supposedly a webinar where they explain how they determined, and with a little bit of backup, which comes at some point, but, uh, yeah, there's a lack of transparency on how they derived at these decisions, for sure.
Some more than others, too.
Yeah, and so I agree with Danny. I, I, there's no reason why they, this shouldn't be at least thrown out there. It's not like they're making the laws, they're just advocating for them, so.
On that? Okay, Action Item Z, this is presented by Chris, dear Cara, and there are many things there, I don't know what you want to talk about, Chris, walk through it.
So we're going to do a quick update on some of the pathway work, because it does impact how the board thinks about courses moving forward. None of the pathway discussion is actionable tonight, so Chris will go through the pathway information, that's a, this is a learning experience for the board, an opportunity to ask questions, and then be thinking about as we move forward, and then he'll close up with actionable information, which is specifically the courses.
So I'm going to start just talking like Danny said about the career pathway, the audit process, and what we kind of learned from that process. We started, it's really been four parts that we've gone through so far. So last spring, starting in the winter, we did a lot of training with our lead teachers to develop a common understanding, what are career pathways, career pathway endorsements, dual credit, and the role that plays in some of this. A lot of information that I shared with the board last fall during one of the committee of the whole meetings, is really kind of develop a common understanding, because we were leading up to some summer work that I tasked our lead teachers to do, which was to review the courses in their departments and align that to the pathway endorsement areas by ISB and specific career clusters that are laid out by a career technology education organizations, and just kind of, over the summer, work with their departments, work with their teams, to bring that forward, so we can then, I could start to review what they think we had, and try to put, piece things together to see where we ended up at. And that's where we kind of, number three was really, started in August and September, was kind of defining those pathways, compiling the data that we collected, how do those fit together, how do they support one another? And then we arrive here at number four, which is where we are reviewing those findings. So reviewing what we learned tonight with the board, and then I'll be reviewing that with lead teachers over the next couple of months, as we start to move, even move for more in-depth with pathways as we go forward. Just, first, just a reminder about the two main things that we're talking about. So a career pathway, we, is locally defined, so we're defining that as a series of three or more classes that prepare students for a career in a field or occupation. It's not just three classes that are related to a career, or more. A career pathway endorsement is an endorsement that's issued by the school on the student's transcript and diploma. That's actually an ISB-approved program. We actually have to apply to the state for a pathway endorsement. ISB offers pathway endorsements, we can apply in seven different areas, we could have multiple endorsements within a specific area, but we do have to apply for those, and they have to, those indicates, a pathway endorsement indicates significant activities in career preparation, career exploration, work experience, team-based challenges, which is where it's kind of embedded in the classroom, where students are working with an industry expert to solve a problem, and then their work is evaluated by an industry expert. And then also, it must include at least six credits of early college credit.
So each student has to individually apply for this?
Uh, no, we apply for, to the state to say, we want to have this endorsement, and then students can opt to take part of that. It's not a requirement, it's, but we are, as a district, required to have one pathway endorsement in place for the class of twenty-twenty-seven.
You said six, you said six semesters of college level?
Six credits.
I'm sorry.
So it's two, two, essentially two classes, two college-level classes.
And that, is that a AP or dual credit or both?
It's, has to be related to the career area, so a lot of times, it ends up being dual credit through CLC, a lot of times, but it can be an AP course, it can be an articulated credit course, there's a few options for it.
Do you have to have a certain number on your score, or just passing the class?
Uh, you have to earn credit, so if it's an AP course, you have to pass the, the exam.
The exam at a certain number. Okay, thanks.
And that's all part of the application, so when we apply for an endorsement, we have to say, this is what, this is how we do all of the components of it, and then they provide us with feedback. It's basically like writing a grant.
Yeah, sure.
Right?
Program applies and gets permission, for lack of a better term, to do this?
Yes.
You can do it, you're applying for the right to put the endorsement on their diploma.
Correct.
You're applying for the stamp. You want to put the stamp on it.
The state approves you so you can put the stamp on.
Correct.
They don't approve it, you can still do it, but they just don't get a stamp.
But the state approves our program?
Yes.
For the, for the endorsement, yes.
So my only question I have with this is that I was thinking of taking a dual-credit course, however, the one thing I'm unsure about is whether or not I get AP credit for this college course, or honors credit, since it is at a higher level.
Um, it's, the, so dual credit is at whatever level that we indicate in our curriculum guide. So right now, most of our dual-credit classes are at, considered at the honors level, but there is, AP environmental science is also dual-credit, so that's the one spot where it does earn AP credit. But that's something that we're looking at, is how we weight those classes in the future. But right now, with like, so for example, our dual-credit English class for senior year, so honors, Ling, and Comp, that's not as challenging of a course as our AP literature course. So when you think about just levels of rigor and how we separate those two, right now, AP is at the, is a higher level of rigor in that case than, than honors, Ling, and Comp. But it is something that we're talking about, is dual credit continues to expand, how do we evaluate that? And there's a page in the curriculum guide that kind of articulates the level of rigor involved in each course, so as we bring things forward, we're kind of looking at that as a metric for, is this an honors course, we weight it at honors level, or college prep level, or at an AP level? Because we do have some dual credit that is at a college prep weighting. And then down at the bottom there is just the link to the isb.net slash pathway endorsements, that is all the information from ISB about the program if you'd like to learn more. State paths, these are the seven areas, so there's some abbreviations, basically agriculture, arts and communications, which is like fine arts, finance and business services, human and public services, that's where like areas like public service, police firefighting, education, that falls into that area, health sciences and technologies, like the medical field, IT, and then MET, which is manufacturing, engineering, technology, and trade, so what a lot of what you would consider like industrial technology and engineering.
Mandated by the state?
It is mandated for us to have...
Put out by the state?
These are the seven areas that the state says we will issue, these are the seven endorsements that we will approve for you.
All my influence with the state, see, we get a civics or government in there, but...
That's included under human and public services.
Okay, thank you.
So, excuse me, so what you're, what this sheet is here, is this is us compiling the data that we, we pull back in, so it's not necessarily a public consumption document, but just kind of looking, how do all these things fit together? So what we're looking at right here is actually our Project Lead the Way pathway. So the pathway courses are across the top in blue, so those are our four Project Lead the Way courses, and then below that is the, what, our core curriculum, right? Those are graduation requirements, and when, then down at the bottom, you have election, or the electives in practical and fine arts, because sometimes the pathways will satisfy both of those graduation requirements, sometimes they will not, so we're trying to articulate in there. And then what we, down there in the very bottom, is what endorsements do we have in this pathway? Because it could be a ISB career pathway endorsement, it might be an industry's credential, it might be a Microsoft, like in our tech academy classes, it could be a Microsoft Office certification. We have career-related electives, because sometimes we might have a pathway, but there might be other courses that could bolster that pathway, right? So if you're in maybe a neurographic design pathway, but there's maybe some digital photography courses that could help you be better as a graphic designer, so those be considered career-related electives, and that's kind of the next phase that we're getting into now with our lead teachers. And then career-related activities, because we do have lots of activities and clubs that support different careers, and we want to make sure that if you're interested in this as a student, you know what activities might be beneficial to you as well.
So this is where, um, I recently, very recently, provided some feedback to them. So when we get to the motion part, I want to amend the emotion that's in there based on some feedback I provided. One of those pieces is, I know this document's not for public consumption, but some nice flowchart version should be. So when I'm looking at this curriculum guide and Chris and Danny had s- had said many times it lives outside the curriculum document. But if, as a parent, I were looking at the courses in here, I would love to see some dots connected for me. Um, and I remember seeing similar documents from Belvidere that had some of this in there. Um, like what kind of jobs do these lead to? Is this for me? Occupations? And like, the really good example of this is the new Project Lead the Way classes, that in the document with a tiny bit more, but for other things as well, so that dots can be connected. So when the kids do have an opportunity for electives, they can say, hey, here's this progression. I, you know, I may want to go into healthcare and whatever. And if I knew that I, you know, take these classes, that'll ultimately give me a taste of it and may benefit me even. So th- this information, although internal, some version of this, that's one of the pieces of feedback should, you know, I was originally saying should live in the document, so if that's where they're going, it, maybe it would be nice to have in there. And it could be just a couple of examples, but it can certainly live outside of it as well.
I appreciate what you're saying. I never really thought of it going into the curriculum guide itself when I was reading through all this.
Yeah.
But I was excited to think, like, the freshmen, you know, coming in to choose their classes. As a parent, hearing about Project Lead the Way, I'm like, oh, they got this like thing for engineers, right? And that's, I think, the only thing available when Donovan really came through. And now I'm like, oh, they're gonna really, they gotta hand out these flyers like this packet of, or at least to have it available to the parents to say, oh, my kid wants to be a nurse. Oh, here's your guide, you know, so I love it.
It doesn't always have to be disconnected. I mean, so if this is where our parents are going and kids to pick their classes.
Curriculum guide. That's why I would never have thought of it, but I think it's a good idea.
See, and I think some parents have and it's, even if it's tied or linked to each other, like it, we need to start making these connections for people, so they're not just picking classes at random and then regretting that decision afterward.
And what, one of the things that we did this year too, uh, is we moved the career, the curriculum guide into Google to make it easier to do things like you're suggesting. So while that document probably will live external, cause we're working with a way, with another company to try and like package it and like do the things that you're talking about, uh, as we fully develop the program. Uh, we want to make sure that we can at least reference it in the curriculum guide and make it very easy for people to get to. So if they're in there, they can access that information. Uh, but we are, we are working to have, and at the very least this year, say, if you're interested in these careers, right? Here are some classes that you could take while you're here that would help you get ready for those careers. Uh, cause we're, we're still very much in the infancy of a career pathway program. Um, but we do have a, we are at the point where we do have information that we can share with parents to help with selecting courses and elective areas in a way that we have not been able to do so before.
All exciting stuff.
Lot of work, yeah.
So, uh, there's a, a lot of this is like self-evident why this is useful for planning. But could you give me a sense of the, like, how did career pathways become a thing? And what portion of the student population do we expect is, is gonna benefit the most from having this kind of information?
So career pathways, really, the career pathway endorsement really came out of, uh, the Post-Secretary Workforce Readiness Act from, uh, several years ago. Uh, so it's legislation, uh, that was passed by the state recognizing that there was a labor shortage. Um, and that kids have interests outside of maybe just tr- traditional four-year schools. And that responsibility of high school is to allow kids to try hats on, right, while you're here. Like, it's low stakes here. Try something on. Is this for you? If not, try something else. Is this for you? Is it not? And really trying to reinforce that, uh, with the, with schools. Um, so it's, over time, it started to evolve to where like, we're trying to balance now, right? So like, some kids might be on a pathway that's gonna take them to a four-year institu- uh, four-year institution, but they're, they might still have a career in mind of the four-year institution, right? Uh, it might be, a kid might be interested in the trades, but they also need to understand, like, just cause you want to go in the trades doesn't mean you stop learning after high school. And what experiences can we provide to those kids, um, internally, also at the tech campus, uh, to help that? So the career pathways kind of came out of that as a way to package, like, the broad high school curriculum in a way that's a little bit more digestible based on student interest, rather than here's 600 classes, pick the ones you think you like.
Yeah, for sure.
Can I add an "and" to that?
Yes.
So, "and," um, the school board, one of the things we're gonna come back to you and ask about in the next six months to eighteen months is what part of this do you want to make as a requirement for the high school experience? So there's a range there, um, all across Illinois. Chris mentioned we have to have here in the next year or so, one option for an endorsement. I think we get up to three as the state can eventually require.
Yeah, by 2031, we have to have three.
So the range of options that's, that you have, that other school districts will, will look at is you can just make everything completely optional and it's just a way to package your electives. Um, at the end, the other end of the spectrum is you can require all of your students to take a career path, uh, a series of courses.
The ones you, three that you offer, whatever, how many ever you have?
Or how, yeah, however many you have, or, yes, yeah, you can require that students participate. Then there's kind of in the middle, like, you require maybe freshmen to take a career exploration course and identify a career interest to kind of kick them off to then optional decisions that they might make in the future. So we're gonna have to have more conversations around what type of, to what extent do you want this to be part of the required experience or supplemental experience? And how does that impact graduation requirements, uh, moving forward?
Comment, but, uh, cause as Danny says, I, I usually draw on life experience when I think about this sort of thing. When I was a freshman, I had no clue what I wanted to do. My first reaction was I wanted to be a teacher, Lord help me. My second reaction was I wanted to be a lawyer. Again, Lord help me. I changed careers four times in my lifetime as I got older. How flexible is this? I mean, if a kid gets involved in something and changes his mind when he's a junior or whatever?
So it's very, it can be very flexible, right? Um, so an example, like, we've been talking a bit about Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way is the most inflexible pathway that we would have because it is a four-year engineering program. Um, a lot of, a lot of career pathways involve a series of three or four semester-long courses over a span of four years. So every year, a student really has four slots. In the freshman sophomore year, they have four elective slots each year that they could put select classes in. So like, we're talking about three or four classes over four years. It's really not the bulk of their elective choices, depending on what they pick.
Help me with the math. Does that include the s- the languages that are required?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
And that's the tough part.
That is the tough part. So there are, like, just like there is now, there's choices that have to be made. But the, the idea being try something on and if you don't, if you're not interested on it, in it, like, you can try something else. We have tried to have multiple entries into a pathway. So even if you didn't do something as a freshman, you, if it's a freshman, you could try something different as a sophomore. We do, uh, we do, um, administer a career interest inventory to all of our freshmen, uh, as part of their activity period. So try and do some career awareness work. Uh, that's a state requirement. Uh, but one of the things with career pathways is now you have to start to build on that, right? When we start talking about the endorsement programs, we have to build on the, the, that's one of the career exploration activities. But then what do you do with that information that they learn and what experiences can we, can we provide for our, our students? Um, so what I'd like to do right now, though, is kind of highlight what some of the, these things look like, maybe in practice. So like, Tony, you were talking about, like, there's a lot, lots to digest on that document. Uh, but we kind of boiled it down to just the pathway courses. So we clearly define pathways. Project Lead the Way, you take Intro to Engineering and Design your freshman year, Principles of Engineering your sophomore year, Digital Electronics junior year, Engineering Design and Development when you're a senior. That, those four classes, those four credits, that's the pathway. It's very clearly defined. It's linear right through. In Health Sciences, right, that's another pathway endorsement area. There's multiple departments that could be involved in that pathway. For example, in 10th grade, you could take Sports Med 1, which is a semester-long class at Oak Plain and PE. Then you could come over to Almond and take Anatomy and Physiology in the Science Department as a junior. Uh, Sports Medicine 2, you could take as a junior or a senior. Um, that's out of the Physical Education Department. And then you could take Honors College General Chemistry as a senior, and that is a dual-credit course. Uh, that's designed, part of the reason for that course is designed for people who might be interested in Health Sciences. So that's an example of working with the science and the PE departments to establish a Health Sciences pathway. Information, the technologies, so looking at IT, well, this is an example where you could do a pathway with us or you could do something at the tech campus. Uh, so we have an Intro to Coding class at Oak Plain. Uh, then Tech Academy certifications, you could take as a sophomore. You could take that as a junior, as a senior. You could take that anywhere, but for purposes of our diagram, right, to take that as a 10th grader. Um, then if you stay with us in the blue, you could do coding using HTML as a junior and Tech Academy Plus again, or Tech, uh, or Tech Academy certifications as a senior. Um, or you could go to Tech Campus and Tech Campus has two different programs you could take with cybersecurity or game programming. So it's a way where, like, in an IT pathway, we have this series of classes in-house where kids can opt to take a different, um, route through that pathway, uh, using Tech Campus. Um, Finance and Business Services, uh, that's, uh, sort of mostly out of our Business Department. That's an example of, well, you start with Business Foundations as like kind of a key class. And then maybe you figure out what I'm interested in, uh, Business Foundations. And you might want to go into Marketing or Business Administration or Human Resources. And based on that, there's, uh, different classes, uh, that you might want to take.
What's the Tech Academy?
Tech Academy is our program. Students, uh, work on Microsoft Office certifications. Uh, it is dual, the Tech Academy certifications class is dual-credit with CLC. So students actually can earn up to 12 credits in a semester, um, and through Tech Academy certifications and Tech Academy Plus. And Tech Academy Plus is very similar to that, but they fix Chromebooks in that class.
Talk about Office. Do you get past Excel and Word into Access and things like that?
Uh, we just work, right now, some kids do dabble in the Access certifications and most of our kids are in Microsoft Office, uh, Word and Excel at the first and second level of those, of those tests. So it's, uh, CLC 117 and 217 levels for Word and Excel. They're AMT Department.
Bet you have a crystal ball, but this requirement, what's this gonna do to the tech campus?
The tech campus is very much part of this. Um, so as we start to establish pathways, and there's some schools that are a little bit further ahead of than us, um, that I've been talking to and learning how, how they've leveraged the tech campus to establish some pathways. So the kids that go there, cause they do have programs that we can't offer here, um, and how they've worked with the tech campus to establish, uh, pathway endorsements for those kids. So that's one of the other pieces that we're gonna be working at is what's available to our kids out there and how do we turn those into?
Part of the exciting thing about bringing this stuff on site is, I, I know, I know I'm gonna get it wrong, but you have to take three classes or is it three periods?
Three periods a day.
The tech campus, which pretty much eats up all your electives, correct?
It does. It eats up electives and a lot of kids lose a science class.
Right. So it's never been appealing for my kids and my situat- maybe others for that reason. So by bringing some of these programs on site, maybe there's even better participation. So I'm curious. I, I know there's no way to tell. I didn't know if like tech campus kind of goes away if all the local districts start creating their own, but it sounds like.
It, it doesn't go away, cause they do have programs that we just can't offer.
Okay.
But there are things that we can do to strengthen our programs, uh, that are, to make them more relevant, to make them more engaging, to make them things that kids want to take and stay here with us. Um, so, yeah.
I don't want to nitpick, but how do you go from marketing to sports marketing to accounting?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should explain that a little bit more clearly. The, the white bars are just like, the, those are three different pathways. There's a marketing pathway, a business administration pathway and a human resources management pathway.
I'm just wondering how you, how you think about sports marketing versus a general marketing of something?
We do not have a general marketing class.
There's only sports marketing and fashion marketing.
I'll take sports, thanks.
Yeah, so Mr. Carlson's bringing up a good, a good point, and I think Chris is gonna get to this in a minute. But what we did is we said, where do our classes fit? You won't, we're not proposing any new classes today based on the audit. We might in the future. But we're trying to figure out what we can do with what we have.
And that was part, I, I didn't mention that earlier. That was part of the exercise for our lead teachers over the summer was, tell me what you have right now, but also tell me what do you want to have in the future? So what are your dreams for the programs that you think would be, the classes that you could offer, the pathways you could offer that you think would be really meaningful, uh, for kids? So that's also one of the, the things that we're gonna be working to build. Uh, so in Arts and Communication, there's a lot of potential there. We actually have a lot of pathways existing in Arts and Communication, just because of the variety of the fine arts that we offer. Um, Journalism is one that has a lot of potential for us. It's, right now, it, we have a journalism class. It's kind of indirectly supported by our Communications Class, Digital Video Production, Digital Photography. It all kind of works together, but it's not a pathway, right? They're not all working towards like a broadcast journalism career. So there's a lot of opportunity there to rethink our courses or have new things to build a journal, a true journalism pathway. Their Fine Arts and Industrial Technology combine under Arts and, um, Arts and Communication as, uh, in a graphic design pathway. So here, the two classes that you see in blue are industrial technology courses that are offered at the Oak Plain Campus, Graphic Printing 1 and 2, um, which we're actually re-titling to, uh, Graphic, uh, Design Production. Um, and then Graphic Design Studio is an art class. That's, uh, we're, we're launching, uh, with the curriculum guide next. Uh, it's a re-titling, a little bit reworking of an existing class. Graphic Design Studio 1 at Oak Plain and then 2, and then it capstone's with AP Studio Art as a senior. But if you notice on this, the industrial tech offerings are, are, are at the Oak Plain Campus only. And then as it moves to Almond, it becomes art. And that's not because of a reason, a rationale in the sequence, is because our industrial technology offerings are limited at the Almond Campus. I'll just talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but right now, we do not have, there's multiple things that we do at Oak Plain in Graphic Printing, Manufacturing, Woods, Engineering, uh, direct graphic design, um, that we do over there, that we do not have the ability to do over here at Almond, when kids actually have more room in their schedules. So just the findings, what we have, we have 29 pathways that we identified. The three or more classes, 29 pathways. That's the breakdown right there. Like I said, the most are in Arts and Communication. Uh, the Manufacturing had five. Finance and Business Services also had five. As you'd expect, most of that comes from our Industrial Technology Department, Business and Fine Arts Departments. But Science, uh, had a few and English is, has some great ideas for how they can build in the future. Uh, we have zero pathways ready for ISB Career Endorsement at this point. Uh, we expect to have, make a lot of progress on that in the upcoming months. But as we complete the audit, we do not have any pathways at this point that we can go to ISB and apply for. What we learned, we learned that this is not with, these do not live within departments. So it, it requires a lot of coordination across multiple depart- multiple departments. It involves a lot of articulation about curriculum. Who's teaching what? What is it being taught? What class is it in? If we make this change, now I can't just think about my department, the courses in my department. I have to think about this department over here and what they're teaching. And if I make this change, how does it impact that? So there's a lot of coordination, uh, that takes place with that. Uh, some pathways will require new courses to be implemented. So as we're talking like Journalism is an example of that. If we want to have a Journalism pathway, we need to have new courses to go with that. We have some, we've expanded our dual-credit a lot over the last several years. Um, we've added a lot of English, Science, uh, our AMT classes are in Tech Academy. But we don't have a lot of early college credit that's career-focused. So that's an area that we need, as we look at pathways. And that's actually, when you talk about, uh, dual-credit in the trades, that's actually a relatively easy place to establish dual-credit because CTE courses is based on work experience and resumes. Whereas what they call transfer credits, which is basically every other area, you have to have a master's degree in the content area or a master's degree plus 18 hours in the discipline. So it's much harder to get transfer credit, dual-credit certification. So this is an area of growth that's, is very obtainable for us. Uh, and then internship and apprenticeship is, is required as part of the endorsement. So 60 hours of interns, paid internship or credit-bearing internship is required. Um, and those pose lots of implementation challenges for us in terms of scheduling, staffing, uh, data tracking, all of those things. We do not have the structures in place for those, that part of the endorsement program at this point.
Could I just ask, when you said you need three pathways by 2031, are those endorsed pathways?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
So we can, right, right now, we have 29 that we could say, these are path, career pathways, right? But we have to have three pathway endorsements by, for the class of 2031.
Which would acquire, require the internship apprentice?
Correct.
Components, okay.
I, so I want to say, um, if you look at this thing like from a global, like, everything, all of a sudden you have all these pathways and people going in different directions that are new, cause they're not thought of that way today, right? But we want them to think about it that way. You can see that there's gonna be an elective crunch in the path, for sure. And I think at some point, we may have to change the way we think about what's required and what isn't required. Cause if you're gonna be in this pathway, maybe. Because if you're going to be in this pathway, maybe, you know, a foreign language doesn't matter or this, whatever. I'm just throwing things out. But I think that that's, as we, as we think about this, I think that has to be a subset of what we're thinking too.
Well, and that's, that's why I even brought up the foreign language because as a mother of a child who wanted to do band for four years. You add the foreign language, you're done.
You're done.
You're done with all electives.
Yeah, yeah.
This is where I get torn because I know our charge is to prepare kids for college and careers. At the same time, they're kids. Let them learn for fun too. So where does the history of rock and roll fit in? That is a course.
Or photography for someone that really enjoys it, but don't want a career in it.
Sometimes you suck the love of learning out of things. When you're taking AP classes or just any class and it's challenging, it's nice to have, to learn for the sake of learning. It's nice to have that one period that excites you, maybe even gets you to come to school. So I do worry, John, like what you're saying is right on. I.
Yep. It'll have to change at some point.
It will have to change.
If you're going to be effective in this.
Yeah.
Helping people get ready for a specific career, particularly.
Yeah.
The non-college-based careers.
Yep.
They need to have more flexibility.
Yep.
Well, in addition to that.
To take more of these pathway courses.
But in addition to that, what Chris was saying was we don't have specific courses to put into. So now there's going to be a retooling of our actual electives that might narrow some of that, some of those focuses. That, that concerns me too. Like if you're not going to do sports marketing, but you're going to do a marketing class. Or I'm just using it as an example. You might have a lot of these kids interested in the sports marketing and that might get them excited about marketing. But I'm not saying that's what you were doing as an example.
Right.
We're, we're going to gain, but we're going to lose too.
So it's important in the process to have options for kids, right? So, but it's also a balancing act with, as we talk through new courses with lead teachers about like not having so many options that nothing will run. Because kids conflict out, right? So there's a balancing act there, but we do, we are talking about that, like let's have options. So it's great to have this marketing pathway, right? But do we have enough types of classes that will, that kids will want to take within that and have options to take? So when we talk about pathways, that's why Danny and I are talking about three or more. There's lots of room for a kid to take three marketing-related classes over the span of four years. But if you start getting into something where it's like, you know, eight semesters or like four credits, like that's a lot. That's a huge chunk of your electives. Like that's why I say like Project Lead the Way, while it's very clearly defined, that's one that you really got to know going in.
Are there any band kids in Lead the Way? Like no, you know, it's very limiting. Very limiting.
So there's, and, and the way our, and the way our graduation requirements are worded is you have the like one and a half credits of elective. But then you have one credit set aside, which is practical or fine arts, including world language. So a lot of our pathways satisfy that piece of the graduation requirement. But there are choices that you have to make in terms of world language, band, because those are, you know, full year electives. But then as your kid moves towards their senior year, you know, social study, they might not take another social studies class and they have a couple of electives that they can take.
I, I just, you know, as I'm listening to all this and I'm thinking, well, what did we do in high school? We all made it, a lot of us made it to college and have careers, right? If not three or four, multiple, right? And I just, I'm trying to think like, there is a purpose to this and I understand it. And there is, this is important to some kids. I know Project Lead the Way, for instance, has been a huge success with a lot of kids. And it's really helped them further their education on to college. But I also think about over, you know, overdoing this and, and I appreciate the work. That's a lot of work and it's. And I think it would be great for parents, especially freshmen, saying, oh my God, look at this course like book, like what, how do we know? I would never think some of these classes would land me towards a nursing career, which is something I would enjoy. So I appreciate all of it. I just, I'm sitting here getting overwhelmed even as a parent thinking, oh my gosh, we're over. We're overbooking our kids already in high school again, you know?
I think it's important to note too, like not every elective is in a pathway, right? And not every kid, the way that we're at right now, not every kid needs to do a pathway. And the way that it's kind of shaping up is a lot of the interest-based stuff falls into different places. So like the pathway endorsement, it gets so easy to mix those two together. But a pathway is just taking some classes that are kind of getting you ready to find, like, do you like this? Right? A pathway endorsement is when I know, I did the career exploration when I was a freshman and sophomore. I know I really like, I really like auto, right? Like I like fixing cars. I know that's what I want to do. Well, now if you go over to Tech Campus and take a class over there and you do an, find an internship and you do an internship. And you do some team-based challenges and over there, that's Skills USA. And you do all that because you're really into it, now we can say, when you leave here, you've got this endorsement saying you did all of this work. You are more prepared than another kid leaving another school that didn't do all of this work. So that's the opportunity in it. So I like, just philosophically, because I agree with you. Like I feel like high school is a place for kids to find passions and to find opportunities to like explore what, what really interests them. So we want to make it easy for kids to move in, in and out of pathways. But we also want to have an opportunity for a kid that finds a passion to have some extra benefit and that makes them really marketable as they leave Warren.
Related to Beth's question, how often does a student have access to a counselor? Does the counselor have any role in approving the courses they're going to take or is it just suggestion? How much guidance do they get and how often do they get it?
Um, I'm actually, Pat, do they, they can meet with their counselors anytime, but they, they do course selection. So they meet with their counselor anytime. I know the freshman counselors meet with the kids like right away at the start of the year. Course selection is a process that's usually between the counselor and maybe the, the parent a little bit, but usually between the counselor and the student that runs in the winter. Mm-hmm. Yep, every time.
Also, as you're talking, realizing that, I hope that our post-secondary counselors are getting, like they're in a unique position to see connections across departments. Based on the conversations they're having with a lot of these universities. So as you're doing this stuff, I hope the two positions we have are.
Carrie and Trini are invaluable in this work.
Yeah, I was.
They've been amazing.
Yeah, they're going to see things that other people aren't going to see.
Yeah, they, they've done a lot of work with, behind the scenes with like some of the career exploration activities that they've done fit right in. This is, every other year we have to do some Perkins and CTE audit stuff with the state. And those two are always working with me and Mike Schuman and Jamie Zaven, our two CTE lead teachers, to help do, put all, pull all that together. So yes, I, I agree with you. Those two are, are really instrumental in making some of this go. So that's our findings. So that kind of takes us to the next part of the question about where do we go from here, right? What are some things that we need to think about? And really, as we process, as Danny and I process what we were learning, we came down to four questions. And the question is, a lot of the questions we've been talking about the last few minutes, do we have the right pathways? Are they the right, are they high interests? How do they match with labor market analysis? Like do kids want to take those? Do we have the right ones? Do we have the necessary dual credit or stackable credentials to take pathways and turn them into endorsements? So those are the questions that we need to ask ourselves. How do we build staff capacity within career-related instruction? So we might have an industrial tech course that we want to run and we have certified teachers to do it. But just because a teacher's certified industrial technology does not mean they have the skill in that particular area of the trades to teach that class. So if we want to run that class, do we have a way to make sure that that teacher is ready to teach that class? So those are the things that we have to think about. We have to build some capacity in our staff. And then also in the areas of dual credit, do we have the capacity to increase our ability to offer dual credit through teacher credentialing? And then are we allowing students to connect with and access real-world experiences? So how are we getting our kids to know what's going on at the Advanced Technology Center over at CLC? How are we connecting kids to internships and apprenticeships in a way that's tied to something, in a way that's setting them up for future success? And then how are we allowing kids or how are we finding ways for kids to explore job experiences? I know through the ROE, a couple of weeks ago, they had a job fair. It was like kind of a trial thing over the, at the ATC. For the first time, I know they're going to expand that to a bigger venue next year. So that's a great opportunity for high schools to bring kids to learn more about the trades. But there, there's starting to be more and more activities like that. But how do we connect our kids to that? So Carrie and Trini play a role in that, but again, that's a huge project. You know, there's 3,700, 3,800 kids. And we have to make sure that we're getting, connecting all of them. So to maximize that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work here. So what we think, we think there's two positions that are pretty, that we think are likely needed, that we need to kind of consider. And one of those is an administrator. So that administrator would focus on the expansion of dual credit and stackable credentials with CLC. So working on establishing new dual credit courses, making sure we're getting the industry credentials that we need, our kids need to be successful. Making the person that's working with ISB to establish and coordinate those pathway endorsements. So as we check all the boxes for a new endorsement, that person then makes that go with ISB. Increasing industry partnerships in the community. So we're working internally here to make our programs go, but also being out in the community with businesses, business leaders in the trades. Connecting kids to opportunities in the workforce. And then as I mentioned earlier, we need somebody to centralize the career pathway program and that's sitting on it 24/7. It's, because it impacts everything. It's across the board and you really need to have somebody to centralize that process to make sure it doesn't fracture. And because, and identify leadership at Warren would help with that. In addition to that, we think we need a certified staff member, a career pathway and an internship coordinator. And what that person would do would be connecting students and teachers to internship opportunities in the community and within WTHS. So once we know we have these opportunities, how do we get kids to those opportunities? And that person would be doing that, right? They would be like this, we, we've got these 30 kids that are interested in health sciences, technology. Well, let's get them connected to these internships. What internships can we run inside the school building during the day that are connected to pathways? Let's get those kids connected to that. That's a lot of the work that that person would be doing. And then they would be coordinating the career pathway endorsement data tracking. So there's a lot of data that comes in. There's, it comes from in multiple places. It's not like a grade book in Power School. We have to go to external sources and collect all that. That needs to be tracked. It needs to be made sure it's accurate. And we need to be verifying that throughout. So we need, that, that's kind of what the role that, that position would play.
Would that person be contacting Advocate or Condell or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that would be, that initial outreach would be more of the administrative role. So once that administrator like establishes those, that kind of goes in like a menu of available internships that our coordinator would be connecting kids with. So those are the, as we think about the program, and really what those would do is that would allow us to move from where we're at right now to having a full endorsement program. So we can continue to do what we have right now, establish some pathways through the Tech Campus. Maybe a couple, one or two in-house and like Project Lead the Way is an example. But if we wanted to really grow this, these two positions would be critical in doing that.
Probably part of the future discussion around how much of this do we want to be Warren? I know, I think your example, Steve, made me think, Steve has a couple of times said, hey, I can connect you to this group. I have connections there. They probably could find internships for your students and I believe that I don't have anybody for that organization to work with right now. So that's the type of example of like, yep, these are good. There are a lot of things that could happen here. We just don't have anybody internally to coordinate it and it is a lot of work.
And that model's been implemented in several districts with a lot of success.
I don't, Outreach Subcommittee of the Board of Education.
Yeah.
Couple of people helped me out with it.
You're going to need a full-time person to coordinate the kids.
No, no, but I'm not saying instead of.
Oh, I see.
I'm saying that person could come to me or you or you or whatever and say, who do you know over here?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of times, high schools that get really deep into career pathways, they will have business committees. And you'll have maybe out of the seven, maybe some of them pair together. And you'll have groups of people from the community that meet two or three times a year to help the high school coordinate. And you're exactly right, that does, that model exists.
Okay, we had a presentation. Do you want us to approve something and it's not exactly?
Not yet. We haven't gotten to approval of anything.
What do you want us to approve, Chris?
So what I need you guys to approve tonight, actually we skipped one thing if I could go back for one second. Just one of the things we talked, I talked a little bit earlier about is the industrial technology facilities being unbalanced. So one of the things that administratively, what we would, we're going to investigate, we might, we'll bring back some information later on the year is we'd like to balance. We'd like to balance up, look at, how can we balance up those opportunities for kids? Because Tony was talking about bringing opportunities for our kids in. In order to do that, we need some, some different facilities here at the Almond campus. So we're looking at potentially creating, reallocating space to create a dual-purpose lab here at the Almond campus. We're looking at several spaces to, can we capture something? What's cost-effective? What's not as disruptive, what's less disruptive? That would create additional dual credit opportunities in the career areas. And our initial thoughts as we started to look at curriculum, as it would support careers in web design, graphic design, video production and post-production, advertising, printing technology, social media and marketing. Like all those things are, are growing job fields, high demand, highly skilled areas. So a dual-purpose lab would help us to meet all of those needs here at the Almond campus and create more opportunities for kids. So what I need to actually talk to you guys about approving is our instructional program for the 24, 25 school year. Before we get into that, just a couple of quick reminders. We have four levels of courses. College Core being more of our remedial level. College Prep would be our regular level, General Education, Honors and Advanced Placement or AP. Dual Credit typically is assigned as College Prep or Honors courses. We talked a little bit about that earlier. Courses for EL students use sheltered bilingual or ELL as tags in their course titles. College Prep, Honors and AP courses are generally NCAA-approved courses. NCAA-approved doesn't have anything to do with our graduation requirements. That is just simply the NCAA. If a kid wants to be a college athlete, they need to have X number of credits in those approved courses. Course selection, this one I want to talk just for a second about. There's some changes here this year. We used to run November through December for all kids, rising freshmen through rising seniors. This year, our incoming freshmen will do course selection in November and December. However, due to some process changes related to accelerated placement, automatic accelerated placement. We are going to move our returning student course selection into January. So the, previously that was November, December. So kids will be selecting courses in January now, which is much later. Then in the past, it allows teachers to have a bigger, longer time working with kids. When they talk about course recommendations, allows more time for richer conversations about next steps in electives or next steps in, in courses. So I think it's a great move overall for our program, but it does push selection later.
What do they do from September to January? I mean, they don't select their courses until January? You lost me.
So, for the next year, for the next year.
So freshmen would be coming in when they're eighth graders?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to add in, I have to leave now. I have a lot of homework. I'm really sorry, but thank you so much.
Talk to that guy right there.
Yeah, sorry about that, but I have to leave. So thank you guys.
Thanks for coming.
Night.
Before you go, before you go.
Yes.
I think it is great that you guys are here. I think it's great that you're so shy and not willing to contribute.
He's being sarcastic.
You walk for a perspective and you give us a bouncing point and it's, thank you for being here. You contributed a great deal.
Thank you. You're helping our school so much. So thank you for that.
Have a great day, guys. Bye, goodnight.
So the new courses that are in the curriculum guide for approval, Honors, Introduction to Engineering Design would now be for dual credit. So that's the first course and that's a really kind of a neat thing because that's also will be our first freshman-level dual-credit course. Applied Algebra with Geometry. So what that course is for is students are struggling in math. Just moving them on doesn't help them. Retreading an entire year of algebra, if they only failed second semester, doesn't help them. So what this class is, is a one semester class, be run first semester only. And it's for kids that failed second semester of Algebra I during their freshman year. Because the second semester of Algebra I is just a critical year of math. So those kids will take Applied Algebra with Geometry that will reinforce Algebra I skills. It will cover, root that in application and geometry concepts, reinforce skills that they'll need to then be successful when they go back and retread Algebra I in, during second semester. So kids, well, those kids will come out of O'Plane in theory with one and a half credits of math instead of two. But they'll, their math skills will be much stronger and they'll be in a much better position going into Algebra II as, as juniors.
Is it so common to fail the second semester of Algebra I that this class is only for kids who meet that description?
This is only for kids that meet that description.
Okay. All right.
It's not, it's not that it's, it's that common, but that's a, that's a group that's very at risk. And we are targeting a specific group of kids with that class.
Right.
You failed Algebra, you failed the whole year.
And if they failed first semester but passed second semester, we're moving them on to Geometry. Because the thought is if you pass second semester of Algebra I, you've remediated, already remediated those skills because it's, it cycles through. Freshman Athletic Conditioning is a new PE class, providing advanced fitness-based activities. So it's a lot, really for like kids that are athletes, that are freshman year. We have that class for every other year in school. But it, kids that are athletes or kids that just really like to work out, it gives them something that might be a little bit more up their alley. And then Espanol Cultura y Linguaje Trace Honores extends our Spanish Language Arts Instruction. So right now, we, and we retitle all of our Spanish Language Arts and Culture classes to this. And what this class is, is our kids that come through what is now our Spanish Language Arts and Culture. Um, and what this class is, is our kids that come through what is now our Spanish Language Arts and Culture I and II, the college prep level. Right now, as juniors, they go to Honor Spanish IV, which is not the right class for them. Um, this class has a lot of English learners in it. It has a lot of kids who are just native Spanish speakers. Um, but this, but this class is now, this is an honors-level class. It is preparing them for the SEAL by Literacy, which can relate, uh, translate into college credit for them. It is an honors-level class that these kids can now access. It is a fantastic opportunity. I'm really excited about the work that our two World Language Lead Teachers did to develop this class. Um, and then these kids then would go to AP Lang, uh, AP Spanish Language and Culture as seniors. Uh, so it's just, uh, giving a little bit more depth and serving our student population a little bit better with this course. Um, Curriculum Guide highlights, we're aligning course titles and some content to support career pathways. Uh, for example, Bio II is now Anatomy and Physiology. Uh, one of the big changes in science, uh, is we are talking about, um, having kids take a survey of science courses, right? So like, we saw in one of the pathways, instead of taking physics as a junior, a kid that's interested in health sciences is taking Anatomy and Physiology and dual-credit chemistry here at, while they're at Warren. And that's okay. Right? So like, taking science, like, we want kids to take as much science as possible, but try to make it more accessible for them. Um, and then we have some honors courses in new areas. Uh, Sports Medicine II is an honors-level course. When we look at that, they're, they're doing med, medical field-type activities. They're doing internships. They have a lot of work that they're doing. That is an in-depth, rigorous course. So we are, uh, we have Honor Sports Med II. Um, our bands, our top bands, perform college-level music. Um, and recognizing that, again, they're performing college-level content, we have, uh, we're classifying our to, two top bands as honors-level bands. Um, and then there's, uh, earned honors. So earned honors is a concept that's kind of grown in education over the last several years. And, um, where a kid is in a college prep class, but does some extension on their learning. It was like a predefined extension on their learning. They complete that extra work at a high level. They can then earn honors for that class. So we are going to pilot that in our Symphonic Winds, which is our second-to-top band next year. See how that goes, and then we have some other ideas of how we can implement earned honors opportunities for kids, uh, in different academic areas. Really, what the, all of these things together is we're trying to align the career pathways. We're trying to increase access to early college coursework and rigorous coursework for all of our kids. And provide additional academic supports for students who need them. And that is my stuff. Yes.
Just on that. I know it's late, and, and I understand everyone's in your affirmative. I appreciate it.
Pass John's time here.
I understand that. Uh, but I don't want it lost. So I just, having said that, you know, supporting the kids that need the supports. Uh, we've talked a lot about career pathways, rigor, AP, honors, dual, uh, we could go on and on. And it's impressive. And I have a student that has benefited from that for four years and appreciate all of it. Um, but a couple of months ago, we sat here and listened to a presentation about our freshman on track and our declining freshman on track and subgroups of freshmen that are not on track. And I, I listen to this as a parent reaping all the benefits of all this work and hard work, and I appreciate all of it. But I stand that this is work that started long before I came on the board. We, we're talking months and months of work. So going forward, um, my concern is losing, losing the conversation or not emphasizing enough of the conversation um, about how are we looking at the freshman curriculum? If we are having kids that are struggling so much, what are we doing with them? How are we, how are we tooling that, maybe retooling that? Now that we've had a referendum and we have new teachers, we have more teachers, we have more support. You know, do we need in the future to start paying more attention also? I don't think it's an and or nor, right? I, I mean, it's an or, it's an and, probably. But I appreciate the Algebra with Geometry. I know someone that would benefit from that today, right? But at the same time, the focus is putting kids forward into higher-level classes and rigor. I hear the word rigor a lot, but rigor is relative for kids, what I'm learning very quickly. And not all kids start at the middle ground and move forward, and they're trying to just catch up some days, right? And I don't have to tell you guys. I'm concerned that with all of this state pushing, you know, a lot of the discussion in these career pathways, I'm concerned that, um, maybe that conversation might be a little bit lost or less focused. So do you have any comments about that, or?
I don't know. It's, it's, it might not be captured a hundred percent in our conversation tonight. But we have, we, we look at, uh, like, the, the achievement data constantly. And we're, we have a lot of programs that we do have in place. Like, we have the Math Interventionists of both campuses, which are doing pull-out, push-in services. Uh, we put in, a couple of years ago, we put in Math on Track. Uh, so like, we have the extra time with kids. We, this year, we started running a Science on Track to try and intervene during, while it's happening. So like, the applied algebra is great, but that's after the fact. So we're trying, and we don't, like, we don't have the answers, but we are trying, like, whatever we can to try and get kids more access. The problem we run into really is time, right? So like, when I was talking to, uh, Dr. Kupfer about, you know, like, how is our science, our, our science program going? Um, he mentioned, he's like, the problem that we have is every kid that needs that Science on Track support, those kids also need Math on Track support. And that's a twenty-minute period that's opposite their lunch. Well, they don't have two lunch periods. So it's like, trying to figure out, how do we get kids access in the time that we need?
So I guess to that, I guess my question as a layperson parent, is it a matter of retooling coursework? Or is it a matter of retooling the class sizes for some of these kids? Because I'm just throwing it out there as a, as a, you know, know-nothing. But what I, what I'm seeing is, we don't, this is very facetious, but we don't ask honors kids to go during their lunch period to do honors work, right? Like, it's part of their inherent class work. And so I guess I'm wondering, do we need to kind of like relook at things for the freshman class work? And say, maybe we need to look at this a little differently, even in class sizes, or whatever the case is. You guys would know better than I, but between English and math, if we're not having kids pass in that freshman year, and all of this work is getting a lot of kids out the door running, but we are only as good as our kids that are struggling and not making it. So.
I think that, uh, that we are doing those things and have been doing those things, because we have the, the sheltered classes, and we have the, what do they call that?
School that is school.
Hour and a half, yeah. Hour and a half classes for math, hour and a half classes for English. And so, I don't think, what you said, what you said is, it's an and. That's correct. We are doing both. This is just a presentation about this part.
I understand.
And I, and I agree with you. We don't want to lose that conversation, ever, because it's very important. But we never can lose sight of the fact that those kids come into the school behind. And we want to catch them up, and we should target that as part of our goal. But there's a, there's another problem in this thing, is they come here behind. So there, there's, we need a solution between everybody, and we can do our part, and we should do our part. And hopefully, I think we are. But you're right. I think there needs to be a change in structure, too, but.
I can't help it. I have to throw two cents in here, and it's not directly on the topic, but, and I'm talking about where I come from. In my day, we had a requirement to take civics, American government, history, whatever. I, I doubt one student, much less ten percent of the adults in this community can name their state rep, their state senator, their senator, their congressman, the president, whoever. Much less who knows who, say, Robert Kennedy was. And we're making decisions every day, and, and what's happening. I'm very passionate about this, but I'll shut up in a second. Do we teach the kids anything about how democracy works? How voting works? How their government works?
Yeah, our very sophomore is required to take, uh, Government Civics. It is a graduation requirement. Whew.
Yeah.
Glad I had that answer.
That one was, man, I mean, that's, that's from here.
He was getting ready to come over.
I know.
I would have held him back.
Thanks, Tony.
Okay, so what, what are we approving? You want us to, should I read this as written, or do we have, do we have an amendment?
I just, there were edits, there were, there's feedback that I provided prior to this.
So you'd like to propose an amendment?
Yeah, let me propose it, and, are we, are we ready? Okay. So, and, and you can correct this if there's a better way of saying it, but are you finished, though?
I'm good.
Alright. I move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-five Curriculum Guide changes and new course proposals pending, uh, board member feedback, uh, to the administration to incorporate into the document.
Tag it.
Discussion on the amendment.
All good.
All good. Roll call, please. On the amendment.
Just to be clear in the amendment.
We, we, we approve the amendment, and then we approve the main motion.
Okay.
No, it is, that becomes the motion.
We didn't have a motion before.
Not in my Roberts rules, but if that's the way you want to do it, fine.
We don't have to follow Roberts rules.
Okay, 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 okay.
It's the whole, it's the whole thing.
Okay, then we have a motion, and you'll second it, and we'll call on that.
Second it.
Tagging.
Motion was made by Demonte and seconded by Anderson. Yes. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope? Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Yes.
And we'll run that, Mr. Demonte, is that okay if we run that by you then? Before we go for, we'll make the changes and then run that by you again?
Actually, for the benefit of everyone, just, I don't know if there's a way for me to get that, just so, you know, in case someone disagrees, but I, I, I doubt you guys well, but.
Alright. Forgive me for the Roberts rules. That's how I've been doing it for twenty years, and I'm learning.
No, no, I understand.
Forgive me.
The only reason I know that is because we had a lot of questions about that a few years back.
Um, item B under the action items is a memorandum of understanding with Quest Food Management Services. Do we have a, any comment on that or information, or there we go?
We don't have anything to add unless you have questions for us.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between Quest Food Management Services and Warren Township High School District 121 as presented. Roll call, please.
Second.
Yes.
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 Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carl?
Item C is an approval of the FY twenty-four Round One School Maintenance of Project, Maintenance of Project Grant Application. Questions on it? Any presentation?
Unless you have questions.
FY twenty-four Round One School Maintenance Project Grant Application as presented. Roll call, please.
Motion by Carlson, seconded by Martinez. Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte?
Yes.
Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
John, you ready? I move to adjourn the meeting.
Tag it.
Roll call, please.
Motion by Carlson, seconded by Anderson. Mrs. Martinez?
Yes.
Mrs. Squires?
Yes.
Mrs. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Demonte? Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Six yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.